Madam Clark, read the notice, please.
Thank you. Board of Commissioners' public meeting agenda for Tuesday, September 16, 2025. The time is now 7:02. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the November 21st, 2024 issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's office. Deputy Mayor Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Here.
Mayor Kelly?
Present.
All present.
I don't, I see we don't have any minutes. How about executive minutes?
We do. We have executive session minutes for May 6, 2025, May 20, 2025, June 3, 2025, June 17, 2025, and July 1, 2025, for Sessions 1 and 2.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And that's it for executive session minutes.
Communications?
Thank you. We have two this evening. The Nutley Elks Lodge 1290 has submitted an application for a social fair permit for their Tricky Tray fundraiser to be held on Saturday, January 24, 2026, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at 242 Chestnut Street. And the mayor's office has submitted an event application to hold a Ruck March on November 11, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. The march will begin at the World War II Monument, continuing through the Memorial Park, to the waterfall, and returning through the same route. I need a motion, please.
Move it. Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Uh, we, I don't see any proclamations this evening. Reports, Commissioner Petrakko?
I see that I have many reports for, um, public safety for the fire AMTs and municipal court. Thank you.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a Shatree report for the month of August.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, I have various monthly reports for Department of Public Works.
Thank you. Madam Clark, the bills?
Thank you. Bill list for September 16, 2025. Public Affairs, $131,755.92. Revenue and Finance, $3,077,593.29. Public Safety, $57,089.27. Public Works, $52,518.14. Parks and Public Property, $99,446.40. Water Utility, $334,837.81. I'm sorry. Um, sorry, Deputy Mayor, one, one second. Uh, payroll as of September 12, 2025, regular payroll total, $1,014,299.26. Overtime payroll total, $82,753.31. Total payroll, $1,097,052.50, for a grand total of $4,850,293.40.
Move the bill.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And that's it for bills.
Uh, at this point, we'll, we'll step out of order with our agenda. I see Commissioner Tucci, you have some special guests tonight?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is another one of those occasions where we get to honor and commend our youngsters. Uh, this evening, it's our 12U, uh, baseball team from Nutley American, uh, who did an outstanding job. So having said that, I'd like to offer this resolution. Whereas the Nutley American Little League 12-year-old All-Star Team represented the township of Nutley with exemplary sportsmanship, dedication, and teamwork throughout the 2025 Little League season. And whereas this outstanding group of young athletes of the Nutley American Little League 12U baseball team are Anthony Andres, Antonio Algeri, Charlie Smith, Chase McGee, Evan Delafave, Giovanni Bayer, uh, Grayson McCann, Greg Brown, Gwen DiPaolo, John McCary, Michael Urbanovich, and Richie Jasnewitz. And whereas the team's success was built on the foundation of heart, hustle, and consistent effort, as instilled by their coaches. Rich Jasnewitz, I guess you're senior. If he's junior, you must be senior. Um, Craig McCann and team manager John McCary, who emphasized character and preparation above individual statistics or accolades. And whereas the Nutley American Little League 12U All-Star Team achieved a remarkable 4-0 record to win the District A championship title, exemplifying resilience and teamwork throughout their journey. And whereas during the sectional tournament, the team continued to demonstrate their tenacity by finishing with a 1-2 record highlighted by a dramatic win over North Arlington, featuring sharp defense, a home run, strategic small ball, and a walk-off single, though ultimately falling to a formidable Almora team. And whereas the township of Nutley takes great pride in the accomplishments of its youth and recognizes the importance of sports in developing leadership, responsibility, and a strong sense of community spirit. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nutley Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and the State of New Jersey, that the Nutley American Little League 12-year-old All-Star Team is hereby commended for their exceptional season and their representation of Nutley with pride and integrity. I proudly offer this resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Do, uh, do we want to comment now? Are we going to do it?
I'll wait.
All right. Uh, aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko? Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli, would you like to make a comment?
Sure. Uh, congratulations, uh, Nutley American Little League always has a soft spot in my heart. Uh, my grandfather, my father, my uncles helped build, uh, both of those fields. And, uh, I played there a long time ago back, uh, I don't know. It was called something else besides baseball, I guess, because it was so long ago. But, uh, congratulations, you guys have done a great job. Congratulations to your parents, coaches. Um, give your parents a round of applause for driving you around, driving you to practice, driving you to games. So, congratulations.
Wonderful. Mayor Kelly, would you like to comment? I usually call on you last, but, uh, I think it's more appropriate you go earlier.
Yes, ab- absolutely. Uh, first of all, I apologize for not being there in person. Uh, if I could be there, I, I definitely would. Uh, I, but I do want to, as I always encourage you, to put in the hard work now, because I want to see you guys come back here. Uh, especially want to see you come back next year when I can actually be there. Uh, but everyone's going to be nipping on your heels, trying to, trying to take your place, trying to, try to do better than you next year. Uh, so definitely put in the hard work now, so that way you can continue to excel and achieve and, and come back here. Uh, just remember to always thank your, your, your parents, uh, for all the support they give you to, to enable you to achieve so much. Uh, so, uh, with that, I just want to extend my heartfelt congratulations to you and wish you continued success.
Great. Commissioner Petrakko?
Thank you. I too like to say congratulations to all you guys. I see a lot of Petrakko Deli customers in that crowd tonight, and I have to tell you, you're all the apple of my eye. I'm so proud of you. There's nothing like being a merchant or store owner, whatever, and having you guys say, hey, I got a hit yesterday, or I pitched, I did really well. You guys bring back a lot of good memories for me with my own kids. And years ago, when Joe was on the field, I wasn't quite there yet. But, but I like to thank all the parents for all your support, for supporting your kids. You guys are a future out there, and keep it going. Keep hitting those walk-off home runs. Great job.
I'll go, and then you go last?
You go ahead.
Okay. I'll just add my, my comments as well. Uh, you know, you're, you're sitting here, and I'm looking at you, um, and, uh, with pride, because you're part of Nutley and part of Nutley pride and our history of success. We always strive to be at the top and go after that gold ring, no matter what it turns out to be. Uh, you're also the next generation, well, actually, you're the next couple generations uh, of the future of, of our town. Uh, so take your achievements. I hope you, these, uh, these friendships that you've forged now will become lifetime friendships. I congratulate Mom, Dad, and, and the coaches for, uh, their hard work and, and the leadership that I'm sure that they are instilling in you, and, uh, maybe we can add some civic responsibility too, uh, given, uh, the fact that, as you can tell, there's some gray hair up here as well. Uh, but congratulations. Thank you. And, and as the mayor said, we look forward to you coming back next year.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Congratulations again. Um, your, your, your record speaks for itself. Guys did an outstanding job. You represented us well. Um, you're, you're a great team, all right? And I think you proved that. I think you're only going to get better in time as you go along, all right? But what's most striking to me is the character that you guys demonstrated, all right? The tenacity, all right? The commitment that you made, all right? And getting, preparing yourselves for these games and doing everything that you needed to do to be successful, all right? Uh, like some of the others have already said, you are our future, all right? So if you take that commitment and that character that you've demonstrated, and you carry that forth as you continue to grow, Nutley's in for a great future. I want to thank all the coaches for all the time and all the effort that you put in, parents for shuttling your kids back and forth and getting them where they needed to be, when they needed to be there. It's not easy, all right? But it's a, it's a sacrifice that, that's worth doing. So congratulations again, and we're so very proud of you. Would you like to come up for a photo? And the coaches, please.
That's all you have, right? Just that one. Yeah. So. We can take a pause. If you, if you want to stay for the me, the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to stay. If you'd like to scoot out, we won't be offended.
Thank you. Great job. Great job.
John, I'm sure if you were here, they would stay.
I don't know if I'm that interesting.
It doesn't look like it. Uh, moving right along, uh, public comments on agenda item only. Would anyone wish to comment on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one, Board of Commissioners' announcements, Commissioner Scarpelli?
No announcements, Deputy Mayor.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Thank you. Um, the last couple of weeks, I just want to unfortunately tell people to remind them to lock their doors, their keys in their cars. We have had a rash of, um, people breaking into houses again, stolen cars. If you see something in your neighborhood, please call up. Couple of, um, times we get reports of after we go around soliciting information that, yeah, I did see a strange person in my neighborhood. I didn't want to bother the police department. Please, you're not bothering us. Help us. We cannot have eyes all over, um, the place, and it's, um, you know, we're coming into the holiday season. Again, the scams that go, are going out there. If you don't, I, I recommend that if you see a number on your phone, you don't recognize it, don't even pick it up, because it's either, either a spam call or a scam that's going on, and these people are very convincing. So just avoid a problem. If you know any elderly people, or if you people in the crowd tonight, feel free to share that information with our elderly people. Thank you.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I just want everyone to be reminded, and I'm sure you'll see it on our, our public blasts and in some of our storefronts, you'll see our posters. But on Sunday, September 28th, from 11 to 4:00 PM, we are once again holding our Fall Festival. So typically, it's a, it's a great day. It's, uh, usually great weather. Um, the, the vendors that show up are outstanding, and I believe there'll be something there for everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mayor Kelly?
Uh, yes, I have a, a couple of announcements. Just please bear with me as I, uh, pull them up. Uh, this month is Hispanic Heritage Month. The Nutley Cultural Inclusion and Diversity Council, uh, will be at several, uh, restaurants throughout the town this, this month, uh, on Nut, September 24th, October 1st, and October 8th. Look out for more information, uh, for these events. Uh, we will be having a, a presence at the Rotary Car Show this Sunday from 1:00 to 6:00 PM. Uh, the Department of Health will have giveaways and provide information and resources in recognition, in recognition of Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Coming up in October, we have a flu vaccine clinic on October 2nd from 9:00 to 12:00 PM. At the health clinic, it's, uh, Walkins are Welcome. We'll be also having a Health and Wellness Festival on October 4th from 11:00 to 2:00 PM. Uh, this is in Essex County Yanacook Park, the lower level. We'll have, be having our annual Pars, Pause in the Park event on October 5th at the Farmer's Market. And we have trivia night, uh, coming up later in October after the smashing success of our first trivia night earlier this year. Uh, that's going to be at the Old Canal Inn from 6:00 to 9:00 PM on October 23rd. And, uh, given some of the most re, more recent events that have occurred over the course of the week, I do have a statement that I would like to, to, to read, uh, regarding some recent events. Uh, and I'll do that now. Uh, it, it's been almost a week since the savage assassination of Mr. Kirk and the blatant attack on our nation and civil liberties by a domestic terrorist. It's been a period of deep reflection for me from both internal and external observations. I offer the following town, uh, statement to the township. I'm stunned, hurt, and disheartened to see and hear the moral ambivalence, the lack of humanity, and the callous disregard for so many principles of this nation by so many. There is no equivocation about what happened last week. What happened was not only wrong, but a blatant attack on the foundation of our republic. The free expression of ideas was enshrined by our forefathers as the First Amendment for good reason. The founders saw it as a paramount civil liberty from which this nation could and has flourished. It was a gift to all of us, and it was not a gift only to a select few who share the same principles, beliefs, or opinions as you. It was given to all, including you, regardless of whether or not your personal beliefs and opinions are shared by others. I thought that, that regardless of our political difference, this was a universal truth for this nation. It hurts to find out that so many of our neighbors do not support this civil liberty, that it is okay to execute someone for harboring a belief system different from yours, now you're only entitled to the First Amendment if they believe as you believe. Worse still, that some of you cheered the execution as if you were watching a sporting event. This is not merely an undeserved execution, but you cheered an attack on this nation. Never has there been a point in modern United States history where it is so easy and plainly obvious to see who is on the right side of history. I would have thought if our nation ever reached this point, that those on the wrong side would be a fringe, infinitesimally small minority. It is earth-shattering to see how many tone-deaf, narrow-minded, and myopic people there are who carry such hate in their hearts. Over the past week, I have been inundated with emails equivocating, or worse, justifying the execution of a man, son, husband, and father, because it is your personal belief that he participated in hate speech. Get this one thing straight. Speech, beliefs, ideas, opinions, or values that you disagree with are not hate speech, period. Simply disagreeing with such thoughts and calling it hate speech does not make it true. It is those labels that you and the domestic terrorists use to justify and excuse murder and in front onto everything this na, nation holds dear. To equivocators and celebrators, I and so many others have failed you. I have heard you and others on, on both sides of the aisle call speech that you disagree with hate speech, dispute the speech being objectively, despite the speech being objectively not hateful and merely expressing an opinion different than yours. You have been coddled, because no one, including myself, has pushed back on you for calling a deferring opinion hate speech or the speaker Hitler. These responses of hate have been so ubiquitous that it became white noise to me and so many others that none of us bothered politely correcting you. This ends today. I understand that Mr. Kirk espoused certain values and beliefs that were not universally accepted, but his speech was at no point hate speech. Continued to call deferring opinions hate speech will only beget, excuse, and justify more violence. As Mr. Kirk so eloquently put it, "When people stop talking, that is when you get violence." I encourage everyone to keep the dialogue open and to cease chilling it by throwing out terms of hate. Lastly, a huge factor in what brought us here today is our laziness and failure to think critically. Much of the equivocation that I received were attempts to malign Mr. Kirk by pirating a false statement that you heard from someone else or viewed from a carefully edited clip. It is incumbent upon us to think critically and check the source material of something we did not personally witness. This is especially true when observing the media or random social media vi, video. Over the course of the week, I saw two people, one on the right and one on the left, pirate something that they heard from their respective news providers. However, what they were pirating was a demonstrably false and easily disproven statement by a 10-second Google search. These provocateurs rely on our laziness and refuse to think critically. It's time that we do the necessary work that being an engaged member of society demands. It is my hope and my prayer that this turning point in our nation's history does not turn into more violence, but is a point where we can come together, break down the walls of division and hate, and engage in more meaningful dialogue as Mr. Stro, Mr. Kirk strove for in his life's work. And Deputy Mayor, I ask that we be better than Congress and have a moment of silence for Mr. Kirk and his family.
Mayor, I think if we're going to do that, it would be valuable for us to recognize not only his death, but the death of the many children that have been shot up in schools, uh, because that also took place on, on that day. The hundreds of thousands of people that have died in Ukraine and the people that are starving in Iraq, and for all of the reasons that are out there where hate is driving a sense of, of separation, I will, I would support holding that moment of silence.
Absolutely. There's no place for hate.
Thank you. Anybody else have announcements? Commissioner Petrakko?
I'm, I'm good right now. Thank you.
I have two. Uh, one is the, uh, the Division of Motor Vehicle Mobile Unit will be here on, uh, uh, three dates for inspections only. They will not be doing anything with regard to, uh, license, uh, vehicle registrations or license or even real ID. Uh, there's two separate units. The one mobile unit that does the real ID is, uh, very, uh, much committed, uh, through November. And we hope that if there's a cancellation, they will come too. But right now, on September 24th, from 9:00 to 2:00 PM, uh, down on Park Avenue, the Motor Vehicle Inspection Unit will be here the same, uh, period of time, uh, for October 23rd and November, uh, 19th, uh, down at Owens Field. Uh, my other announcement, uh, we did hold our statutory tax sale for properties that are in arrears on, uh, uh, property tax and, and water and sewer, uh, over a year. Uh, we, uh, had four, uh, properties that were, uh, uh, tax lanes were, were sold for property taxes, and we had 80 that were related to, uh, water and sewer. Uh, by and large, uh, after we do this, uh, the, uh, the arrears are caught up and, uh, uh, and nothing further happens, uh, but statutorily we regard, uh, to do it every year. Moving on, uh, the, um, to, uh, ordinance introductions, I seek Commissioner Petrakko, you have one?
Hey, this is. This is ordinance number 3601, ordinance to amend ordinance and codify in the code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter 22A, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article 7, Special Zones and Areas, Section 29, entitled Handicap Parking, to add the location set forth thereon. This one, there's actually three of them on for tonight. One is for 11 Oakley Terrace. One is for 115 Church Street, and one is for 25 Essex Street. Like I announced at the last commission meeting about, um, handicap parking, you know, it is truly a need for handicapped people not to have, to abuse it by, you don't want your neighbor parking in front of your house. So we have really looked into our criteria, um, of why and how come it is needed. Um, I had our traffic safety. Police officer do a little digging with this. And when I read these, I am gonna, if I can find it. This is the one I had. No, 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 I'm looking for my own notes. Oh, here it is. First page of figures. So, um, I'm just going to read a little bit about why, um, they're needed at these, um, areas. So for one of the residents, um, both are elderly people. One is required to be pushed by a wheelchair, not to be long-winded. I'll just read some, um, bullet points on this. For another one, it's, um, a resident that is elderly. Um, several of the tenants share a driveway. Um, driveway is further to the side of the red, residence that she is able to, um, enter into. Um, and one of them is a young child in a wheelchair that gets picked up by a school bus via ramp. So, like I said, in the future, when we're doing these, we're going to, um, really investigate why it's needed, and I, as you could tell, those three are needed. So I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at its second reading on, I believe, October 21st. I move it?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Tucci, would you like to consolidate, salute, and congratulate?
Yes, I would, Deputy Mayor. Thank you. Whereas on Saturday, Sunday, October 12th, 2025, the Nutley Bubble Columb- Whereas on Saturday, Sunday, October 12th, 2025, the Nutley Belville Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee will celebrate its 43rd Annual Columbus Day festivities, commemorating Columbus' historic voyage to the New World. And whereas the Nutley Belville Columbus Day Parade Committee has a long history of recognizing community members that have contributed to the rich heritage of the Italian-American culture and celebrate their immeasurable contributions to our community as well as to our nation. Whereas the Nutley Belville Columbus Day Parade Committee will celebrate its annual Honoree Dinner on Wednesday, September 24th, 2025, at Nanina's in the Park. And whereas the 2025 Honorees have demonstrated exemplary service to their community and have therefore been designated for these special honors. Whereas we are proud to recognize and honor Dr. Frank Caciola Jr. as this year's Grand Marshal, Stephen J. Ravel upon receiving this year's Lifetime Achievement Award, Andrea Lynn Camarado Van Bachen upon receiving this year's Italian Heritage Award, Lure Yutako upon receiving this year's Italian Business Leader Award, Christina Marie Latino upon receiving this year's Renaissance Woman of the Year Award, William Lynch upon receiving this year's Community Excellence Award, Patricia P. Bonlamenti and Julie Alangi Palma upon receiving this year's Women of the Year Award, Andrew Frank Rudow Esquire upon receiving this year's Nutley Man of the Year, Stephen Donald upon receiving this year's Belville Man of the Year Award, and Christina Ramo Lamparello upon receiving this year's Belville Woman of the Year Award. Whereas those who enhance the well-being and vitality of their community and have shown a long and sustained commitment to honoring and preserving their culture have earned the recognition of this board as well of the citizens of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey join with the citizens of Nutley to salute and congratulate all of the honorees previously mentioned. I move this resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
That's all I have, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Scarpelli.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need for services of an outside counsel, consulting services regarding environmental law matters. Whereas the law firm of King, Monk, and Collins, 5200 Botham Drive, Morris Place, New Jersey is qualified to provide these services. Whereas King, Monk, and Collins has submitted a 2025 fee schedule to provide such services at an hourly rate of $250 per partner, $175 an associate, and $70 for a paralegal and law clerk for legal services. And whereas a contract will not exceed $15,000 for a period, August 31st, 2025 through September 1st, 2026, if funds are available from account number 501015205, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached here too. And whereas the law firm of King, Monk, and Collins has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to a political or candidate committee in a township of Nutley in the previous one year that would violate NJ SA 1944A 20.5 or the township's local unit pay-to-play ordinance or NJ ELEC disclosure requirements. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, a contract for outside counsel as follows. The mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute, seal, and deliver a 2025 contract professional legal services with King, Monk, and Collins pursuant to a nonfair and non-open process in accordance with NJ SA 1944A 20.5 for a term beginning August 31st, 2025 through September 1st, 2026, for the stated hourly rates not to exceed $15,000, and be a copy of this resolution as well as the contract and the business disclosure entity certification and business entity disclosure of campaign contributions be placed on file with the clerk. I move the resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
That's all I have, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Petrakko.
Yes, this is approval to renew shared service agreement between the Township of Nutley and the Board of Education for provisions of the EMS transport transportation services. Where the Board of Commissioners desires to provide affordable transportation and emergency medical services to certain students, where the township has the means of effectively providing, or if I mention, services to meet the Board of Education's need, whereas the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education have considered this subject and agreed that it makes financial and geographical sense to parties here to enter into a shared agreement whereby the township shall provide transportation emergency medical services to certain students on behalf of the board. And whereas the Uniform Shared Service and Consolidation Act, NJ SA 48651, permits and provides the mechanisms for contracting between local government units by entry into shared service agreements, whereas the Township and the Board of Education agree that their mutual public purposes and best interest will be promoted by execution and delivery of this agreement pursuant to the powers conferred by the Uniform Shared Service and Consolidation Act. Now therefore be resolved that the township approves the renewal of the shared services agreements for EMS transportation services with the Board of Education beginning July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, in the amount of $50 per hour. I move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go next, and then Mayor, you can do yours. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges in the amount of $5,719.18 per block 5800 lot 28, so move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko? Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Whereas David Berry Jr. is employed by the Township and the Department of Public Works. David Berry Jr. has exhausted all of his available sick leave and other time due. Whereas Dave Berry Senior, an employee of the Department of Revenue and Finance, is desirous of transferring a total of 10 days of his accumulated sick leave to Dave Berry Jr. and has provided consent to such transfer in writing to the township clerk. Whereas, under the circumstances presented herein and in view of David Berry Jr.'s medical situation and his service to the Department of Public Works, the Board of Commissioners are desirous of accommodating this request. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that Dave Berry Senior is hereby permitted to transfer 10 days to Dave Berry Jr., so move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
My last resolution marks a change for the township. The, every township is required to have a purchasing agent, and if that purchasing agent is considered to be a qualified purchasing agent, that enables municipalities to operate more, smoother. We've had, explored this, and we've had the opportunity not to replace a retirement, but to actually contract outside for this service, which has resulted in a substantial savings to the township, you know, over $100,000. This resolution of the township commissioners of the Township of Nutley authorizing a change order, wrong one. Whereas due to the retirement of the township, that township of Nutley qualified purchasing agent vacancy exists, whereas the Township of Nutley has a need for services of a qualified purchasing agent through a nonfair, non-open contract as a professional service pursuant to the provisions of NJ SA 19:44A 20.5 and NJ SA 20A 11-1 at S. as amended. Whereas NJ AC 534-5 at S establishes the criteria for the qualifying purchasing agent, and whereas Denise Caphone of Dynamic Municipal Consulting located at 9 Parkway Lane, Fairfield, New Jersey, is qualified to provide these services, whereas Ms. Caphone possesses the designation of a qualified purchasing agent as issued by the Director of the Division of Local Governmental Services in accordance with NJ AC 5:34-5 at S. Whereas Denise Caphone will be appointed as a qualified purchasing agent for the Township of Nutley Department of Revenue and Finance for a three-year term and paid $1,500 a month effective September 16th, 2025 through September 15th, 2028. Whereas funds are available in account 501208205 and 601208205 and 701208205 and 801208205 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Whereas Dynamic Principal Consulting has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year that would violate NJ SA 1944A 20.5 or the township's local unit pay-to-play ordinance or the New Jersey Election Law Enforcement Commission disclosure requirements. It's now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley does hereby appoint Denise Caphone as a qualified purchasing agent with the Township of Nutley for a three-year term effective September 16th, 2025, and paid through, paid $1,500 per month, so move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli? Commissioner Petrakko? Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
I have one more, right? It's, I know I have it. My last one is a resolution of the Township Commissioners of the Township authorizing a change order for a professional service contract with Inglesino Taylor LLC as counsel for the township concerning compliance procedure and legal, general legal issues. Whereas more fully addressed in Resolution 29124, the township has entered into a professional services contract with Inglesino Taylor as counsel for the township regarding compliance procedural and general issues. Whereas change order one is needed in the amount of $25,000 to continue these legal services for the remainder of 2025. Whereas the funds are available in account 501012205 in the amount of $25,000 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order one is hereby authorized and approved in the amount of $25,000. Be it further resolved, and a copy of this resolution shall be placed on file with the clerk of the township and a notice in accordance with the local public contracts law of New Jersey in a form attached here too, shall be published in the Nutley Sun, so move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly, your resolutions?
Yes, just let me pull them up. Whereas raffle license application, I'm sure, have been received from the filing organizations. Homeschool Association, Good Shepherd Academy, license number 5225, calendar raffle Mondays, December 1st, 9th, 15th of 2025, January 5th, 12th, 20th, 26th of 2026, and February 2nd and 9th of 2026. Nutley High School Volleyball Booster Club, license number 5325, November 16th, 2025. Nutley High School Volleyball Booster Club, license number 5425, also November 16th, 2025. Nutley Irish American Alliance, license number 5525, Friday, December 5th, 2025. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the Department of Police. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue said licenses, so moved.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has the need for the services of outside counsel to provide coverage and meetings for the Nutley Planning Board on October 15th and October 22nd, 2025. Whereas the Law Office of Michael S. Rubin LLC, 350 Passaic Avenue, Fairfield, New Jersey, 07004, is qualified to provide these services. Whereas the Law Offices of Michael S. Rubino LLC has submitted a 2025 fee schedule and provided such, to provide such services at an hourly rate of $165 an hour for legal services by attorneys. Whereas a contract will not exceed 2,500 for the period of October 1st, 2025 through November 1st, 2025. Whereas the Law Office of Michael S. Rubino has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to a political candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year that would violate the New Jersey statutes annotated Title IX:44 Alpha 20.5 with the township's local unit pay-to-play ordinance or New Jersey Election Law Enforcement Commission disclosure requirements now therefore be resolved. The Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey contract for outside litigation to counsel as follows, that the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized to enter and directed to execute and seal, deliver a 2025 contract for professional legal services with the Law Offices of Michael S. Rubin pursuant to a nonfair and nonopen process in accordance with the New Jersey statutes annotated Title IX:44 Alpha Dash 20.5 for a term beginning October 1st through November 1st, 2025, for the stated hourly rates not to exceed 2,500. A copy of this resolution, as well as the contract and business disclosure and any certification and business entity disclosure of campaign contributions shall be placed on file with the clerk, so moved.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
The last one I have on for this evening is a resolution for Breast Cancer Awareness Month in October. Whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer in women in the United States, except for skin cancers. It accounts for about 30%, one in three of all new female cancers each year. Whereas the American Cancer Society estimates for breast cancer in the United States for 2025, state approximately 316,950 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women. 59,080 new cases of ductal carcinoma in situ DCIS will be diagnosed, and 42,170 women will die from the breast, from breast cancer. Whereas the American Cancer Society estimates that in 2025, approximately 2,800 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in men and in the United States, and approximately 510 men will die from breast cancer. Whereas for men, the average lifetime risk of getting breast cancer is about 1 in 726, but each man's risk might be higher or lower than this based on whether he has risk factors for breast cancer. Whereas important to know how your risk by talking, is important to know your risk by talking to a doctor about your family history and see that, how that impacts your risk of breast cancer. And for those at an average risk, should get a mammogram every year starting at age 40. Whereas the Department of Public Affairs and Health will continue to work with Nutley Thriving Survivors, a nonprofit corporation, to develop programs to increase awareness and the, of the symptoms of breast cancer and support those women and men who may be diagnosed with the disease. And therefore be resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey recognizes October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Be further resolved that the residents are encouraged to participate in the Nutley Thriving Survivors Virtual Walk, Sunday, October 5th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at the John H. Walker Middle School, as well as the 23rd Annual Thriving Survivors Brunch on Sunday, October 19th, 11:00 a.m. at the Glen Ridge Country Club, 555 Ridgewood Avenue, Glen Ridge, New Jersey, so moved.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. And that's all I have, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. That concludes the formal portion of our meeting. Would anyone wish to approach the microphone and comment? Seeing no one, we have a need to go into executive?
Maria Bazza, 209 Highfield Lane. I have two items. The first, I have heard so many rumors and so many people talking about all different things, so I thought I'd come to the horse's mouth and get the right information about the, the new building for the school, you know, the preschool that was put up, and everybody's saying that Commissioner Tucci has been, you know, has benefited from that in the tune of $9 million, and there's all kinds of rumors, so I thought- there's all kinds of rumors, so I thought I'd come and get it, the correct information.
Let me comment on that first.
I'm sorry, sure.
Let me comment on that first. Ms. Bazza?
Pardon?
Ms. Bazza, I wish to comment.
I can't hear you. Your mic is...
I know, it's hard, isn't it? And my voice is raspy. I'm sorry, I'm dealing with a cold.
Okay.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay. First off, Commissioner Tucci has not participated in any of the negotiations associated with the township's acquisition of 777 Bloomfield Avenue. He has recused himself from every meeting. He has not participated in any votes, and on every item of the payments on our bill list, he has abstained from voting on that item. He is in no way associated with that transaction. I know that because I led all of those negotiations, and I participated fully. The township purchased, as yet, and actually, we were about to, we're waiting for the clearance, we have to wait a few more weeks, but we will purchase a fully renovated school for $9.8 million. Under state law, that's a purchase of a public use building, which we in turn are going to lease to the school district for $220,000 a year, or $11 a square foot for a 20,000 square foot building. That purchase, including the parking lot and all of the renovations, enables the school district and the board to do a couple of things. One, it adds 150 pre-K students into the school district who will benefit from pre-K education using state grant funds. Second, the movement of those children also resulted in us taking action to ensure that the middle school is renovated, such that in September of 2026, the sixth graders in our grammar schools will now go into the middle school, and then it will truly be a middle school serving grades 6, 7, and 8. We call it a middle school, but it's actually a junior high, because it only covers two years. But we will finally get that done. The opening of the space that occurs then in the grammar schools will allow the rest of the children in the township to participate in the pre-K education. That money has been authorized by this board to purchase that building. Commissioner Tucci has not participated in any of that.
I understand all this, or I don't quite understand all this, but at any rate, that's not my question. My question was, did he or his family benefit financially from, he can excuse himself, I understand that, and I appreciate that, but did he benefit in any way from the building or the renovation?
The personal question I would let him answer. I wanted you to have the benefit of what this transaction is doing and the strategy around what we're doing, because I've heard those isolated rumors myself. Okay?
So the answer is?
I will give you the answer, Mrs. Bazza.
Okay.
And let me, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for that. And Mrs. Bazza, I want to thank you for being a big enough person to come here and actually ask the question, as opposed to hiding behind a computer screen, making allegations. So the answer to your question is, unequivocally, I have no interest whatsoever in that building, okay? I have not profited from it. I had no participation in it. I recuse myself from any meeting that was held at the Board of Education, because I also sit with Commissioner Evans on the Education Committee, so I recuse myself and excuse myself from those. I recuse myself from every vote that had anything to do with any of that building. Do I have a relative that was involved in that? Yes. The answer is yes. I have a brother who's part of an investment group who actually purchased that property along with 800 Bloomfield Avenue and the parking lot on the corner. And I've also heard things to the nature of, well, it was an inside deal. The inside deal was, there was a "for sale" sign that was posted, all right? So this group of individuals got together and purchased it, which I had absolutely nothing to do with.
Okay, so your brother then basically owns the property, is that what you?
He is one of the investors in that property. Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm. Yes.
And my second question is, I got my water bill. I spoke to Mr. Scarpelli last meeting. I live by myself, and my water bill is $424, and part of the bill says that my sewer is $215.50. I have my tax bill. Can you show me on my tax bill where that's being deducted from my tax?
So if you go online, you, go online, does you get the full amount? Over a course of two years, because it was implemented over the course of two years, over $5 million worth of cost has been removed from the municipal budget that was transferred into the utility as a result.
But that doesn't help me personally. Tell me where it's that, if I'm paying $200 whatever it is here on my sewer, where is it being deducted from my tax?
It did not go off your tax bill, because the taxes did not go down. Our cost increases were...
I know they didn't go down.
Right, so therefore, since the tax, the cost increases went higher than the amount that was removed out of the budget, we had an $87 tax increase to the average taxpayer in 2024 and 25, we had a $106 increase. If we didn't do what we did, those increases would have been higher. So it came through as a lower tax increase. Unfortunately, our costs were higher.
I don't think you really want we older people to stay in Nutley, because this is an impossible, and I've spoken to many, many people about this. This is, I mean, $424 for one person, living alone? How can, how do you expect somebody, you know, to afford this as an older person?
It's, I know it's difficult.
Well, difficult, it doesn't cut it, you know? I mean, that's why Nutley is changing so much. That's why we're, people are moving out left and right.
The cost of providing services to the township.
How come we didn't have this before? I own a two-family house in Nutley as well. I have two families that live there, and the water bill was $128. How is that possible?
If we didn't do that, you'd be here telling me how much higher your taxes are, because the two of those items combined, if they stayed in the budget, the average tax, which is $13,300 roughly, would be $13,900. So the property tax would be higher. Now, I don't know what your individual assessments are.
They always have something to, you know, make us...
I appreciate your concern. I really...
Yeah, but why is it that two families are getting 100? I don't know how you calculate this water bill. I really don't.
That's a question that Commissioner Scarpelli is in address.
It's based on your usage, Mrs. Bazza. So if your water...
I use that much water, and two families use so much less.
That's something you have to look at, but that's...
Where do I use it? What do I do? A table laundry?
I don't know what, I don't know what you're doing. I'm saying that it's based on, your water bill is based on your water usage. We come out, we read the meter, and that's what it's based on.
You five guys are going to be the only people left in Nutley, because everybody's going. I see more signs all around, and that's all I need to say, to get out.
This is not my department, Mrs. Bazza, but if that bill, I'm not, but if that bill is that high on your house, you might want to check for some leaks, or like their toilet bowl running, or things like that.
My toilet's not, I had a camera coming.
It sounds odd that, like you're saying, if a two-family is a fraction of the cost with the single families, that doesn't make sense to me either.
Well, that's why I came here, because it doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, I just would like to add that, you know, we as a Board of Commissioner are very cognizant of the cost increases that are being passed on to the taxpayers. I just wanted to point out that a vast majority of these cost increases are entirely out of our control, and it's controlled by different factors, such as insurance and the state, but we do our best to keep the costs down as low as possible.
Why can't we go back to the old one, just paying water bills?
Joan Rubino, 127 Franklin Ave. A few days ago, I read in Tap into Nutley, the statement made by the Commissioners concerning Charlie Kirk's passing, his assassination. I also read the negative response by a kind of mean-spirited group, I thought. That's my own personal opinion. And I would like to commend you for making the statement and following through. I also would like to applaud the mayor for his comments tonight, and I hope that they are put into the Nutley Tap into Nutley, word for word. Thank you.
Would anyone else wish to comment this evening?
I just want to thank Mrs. Rubino for her comments.
Seeing no one, move to close the public session.
Second.
Do we have to go into executive?
Yes, we do.
May I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley movement to close executive session to discuss contract negotiations and litigation, be it further resolved that at the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when, and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
We won't be doing any other business, so we can close the meeting.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
The time is now 8:03.